This meeting is called a order. This is a public hearing of the Bonner County zoning commission. Time is five thirty, the date is July fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Location is the first floor conference room of the Barren County Administration Building on Highway two seven point eight. Speaking is being recorded and streamed live via Zoom and YouTube. If you like what you see here, please click the like button. If you don't want this future episode, we should subscribe and ring that bell. Please silence your pagers to get a watch alarm, personal digital assistance and any other electronic devices. I will stand up for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be seated.
We'll have a roll call. The commissioner from my left.
Mr. Paulson present.
Mr. Blazer present.
Mr. Workham present.
Mr. Marl present.
Mr. Clark present.
All right, good five, five, that's correct. Is there anyone in attendance? In need of special assistance to hear, see, or participate in these proceedings? Can everybody hear me okay? Commissioners and staff members, are there any changes to the agenda for this hearing? I did see the email and you're just reviewing two files tonight. I see one file tonight and not three, is that correct?
That is correct. These other two were kind of noticing errors, so we're gonna be, you'll be hearing them next.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Uh, let's see. Commissioners, someone care to make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Commissioner Clark, I move to approve the amended agenda.
I got him. Motion, we have a second.
Mr. Blazer, a second.
Motion is second, all four of us say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. How can carries? The meetings, the minutes from our last meeting held June twenty sixth remain available for future review. Does any commissioner or staff member care to correct those minutes?
No.
No.
So. All right, may I approve the consent agenda? For those who may not be familiar with these hearings, I'll introduce the process. The gentlemen to my left and right are zoning commissioners, we are volunteers. We service, we serve on this commission because we live in Bonner County, we work here, have friends, family here in the left line. Our job is to objectively review zoning and land use applications. We are not employees of the county, we're not politically elected and we're not paid for. We're not paid for the service. We review these applications as best we can. Support from the professionals in the Barren County Planning Department and other county and state agencies. The zoning commission are quasi judicial body. Meaning if we don't make the rules, we follow the rules. This is in contrast to the planning commission, which is a separate group. Who are quasi legislative, meaning that they make, they have the rules that we follow here. People to my left, to your right are staff members of the county planning department, staff members who are employees of the county and subject matter experts in the area of zoning, planning, permitting. They spend countless hours helping professionals and DIYers properly plan projects affecting land use. They also act as filters, ensuring that what comes before this commission is well prepared. Indeed, there are many applications requests that never make it to these public hearings because the proposals are incompatible with county code. The public are also present tonight. The commission solicits public testimony that helps the commission to learn facts relevant to these files, facts that may not have been known to the applicant, their representative or plant department staff. We accept public testimony in written form before these hearings and we appreciate written testimony because there more time to review that. At the same time, we just have one filed through you. And the way this goes is. Oh, and when one filed review, she had a zone change. Uh, the process will be this, staff will present through their report in this application from the rostrum on my left, your right. The applicant and or their representative presents an overview of the project and to the same rostrum. The commission may ask questions of staff or the applicants at the end of their presentations. The commission opens the hearing for public testimony. I'll explain the rules for public testimony at that time. The applicant and staff will have our opportunity to rebut any new information presented in the public testimony, providing that the commission will close all testimony, deliberate and perhaps vote. So our only file tonight is CC three dash twenty five. Zone change rural ten to rural five. The applicant is requesting a zone change from rural ten to rural five. The ten acre property is zone rural ten. The project site is located off Hidden Valley Road in section twenty five, township fifty eight north range two west Boise Meridian. The project site is located within the Northside Fire District Service Area and the city of Hondra's area. Does any commissioner have any expertise communication or conflict of interest to disclose regarding this application?
No, no, no.
Okay. Staff, your turn.
Perfect. Good evening, commissioners, Kyle Snyder, Bonner County planning staff for the record. Just give me a minute here. It looks like my computer's frozen. I don't want the this up.
Hey, we'll pull the time with some trivia. Oh, you're ready?
No, not yet.
It's please. All right. Chair opens the hearing to public testimony. What is the proper name of the tree that we in North Idaho call tamarack?
Western lark.
Western lark is correct.
Wow.
Of the western bear. Impressive. Uh, what is the proper name of the tree that we call the bull pine?
Bull pine.
Elsa?
Oh. Oh.
Fonderosa pine?
Fonderosa pine, that is correct.
Am I? They're all alive.
Not alive, talking up term.
So.
Hey, Douglas fir is not a fir tree. What genus does Douglas fir belong to? It's not a fir, not a pine, not a spruce. What is it? Are you dense? Now. Hey, the Douglas fir is a false hemlock or pseudotuga.
All right, commissioner, I'm ready.
Care close to the hearing, probably has some.
Okay, again, we're gonna be talking about ZC zero zero three dash two five, which is a zone change from rural ten to rural five. Give you a quick project summary. The applicant is requesting his own change from rural ten to rural five on a ten acre lot. Project is located off Hidden Valley Road in section twenty five, township fifty eight north, range two west Boise Meridian. Comprehensible plan designation is rural residential five to ten acres. And this request was evaluated against the standards for rural ten and rural five. On the right side there, there's just a quick site plan of the property in question. On the screen before you are the excuse me, Bonner County advised code sections that this project was reviewed against. Put background on the site, the use is residential. It is a platted lot currently Elsa subdivision lot two. Size is ten acres, zone again rural ten, land use rural residential five to ten acres. And then access come from Hidden Valley Road, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained right away north of the property. Some environmental factors on the site does contain map slopes of zero to thirty percent, as you can see in the light R image to the right. There is a lot of color going there, going on there, but it is the the greater breakdown. So a lot of the green you're seeing is five to ten percent slopes. And then down kind of to the southern portion of the property is where those steeper slopes are. Site does contain map wetlands and it does contain frontage on an unnamed perennial stream, which follows those the heavy sloping down on the south. Parcel is within SFHA zone X per the firm panel. Per the firm panel shown. As far as services, you have your individual well and individual septic system. Fire is coming from Northside Fire District. Power Northern Lights and it is within Lake Pondray School District number eighty four. Agency and public comment, the full list of agencies routed can be found in appendix A. Comments were provided by Panhandle Health District and Northside Fire. Um, following agencies replied with no comment. That was IDFG, Salkirk Fire, Kiki Pondray, ITD, IDWR, DEQ and Fish and Game. I put that one twice. As of the day, the staff report, the planning department has received public comments. These are the standards of an R ten. So R ten in areas designated as rural residential in the comprehensive plan that meet one or more of the following criteria. A, you have characterized by slope, slope that are steeper than thirty percent. B, located within a critical wildlife habitat as identified by federal, state or local agencies. Contains prime agricultural soils and served by a network of public and or private roadways that generally do not meet applicable roadway standards set forth in Title Two. Public roads of this code or appendix A, private roads, the title, or are absent. E, properties within flood plain, floodway. And F, contained limited access to public services. R five in areas designated rural residential in the comprehensive plan that are already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density and or do not meet the criteria for R ten above. Here's kind of a side by side of what I just talked about. Property, the current zone is R ten and proposed is R five. We'll break those down a little bit more in the as far as characteristics of rural ten, characterized by slopes steeper than thirty percent. The subject lot does not appear to be characterized by slopes steeper than thirty percent as shown in the GIS light R image. The slopes on the lot appear to be following the stream that runs east to west through the southern portion of the property. According to the land use portion of the comprehensive plan for density ranges, properties that are level to moderately sloped are appropriately sized to be five to ten acres. Um, no critical wildlife area was determined by any public agency. Additionally, GIS data does not show the property within any critical wildlife habitat area. Contains prime agricultural soils. So the parcel contains three types of soil, pond ray, rock outcrop, outcrop complex, five to forty five percent slopes, which is shown in purple. Mission silt loan, two to twelve percent slopes is your orange. And selly mission complex, zero to twelve percent slopes is yellow. According to the natural resources component of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, ponderay, rock outcrop complex, five to forty five percent slopes is considered not prime farmland. The soil makes up approximately one acre of the subject lot. Not prime farmland is considered as all other soil types not classified as prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance, importance are classified as not prime farmland. For the natural resources component of the comprehensive plan. Approximately seven acres of the subject property is made of permission silt loan, two to twelve percent slopes shown in orange, which classified as farmland of statewide importance if drained. This is not considered prime farmland. Finally, approximately two acres of subject property is made of selling mission complex, zero to twelve percent slopes, which is the yellow and is considered prime farmland if drained. In summary, approximately two acres of the ten acre property fall, falls under the designated categories of prime farmland for the natural resources component. Access to the site is currently provided by Hidden Valley Road, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained right away via highway ninety five, which is an ITD owned and maintained highway. Idaho Transportation Department responded with no comment and a comment was not received from the Bonner County Ruin Bridge Department. The subject parcel is not located within a mapped floodway per the firm panel shown. And the subject parcel has access to public services. Public surfaces, public services that are available to this property include Northside Fire, Bonner County EMS and Sheriff and Northern Lights. As far as your rural five. As far as your rural five. Developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acres. Within twelve hundred feet of the subject parcel, there are approximately twenty nine individual parcels or lots. It appears that approximately seventeen of the properties in the immediate area are developed at one dwelling per five acres. And the closest rural five zoning district borders the property to the south. Uh, your second criteria is does not meet the criteria for R ten. Subject property does not appear to be characterized by steep slopes thirty. Thirty percent or greater. It does not have any identified critical wildlife habitat. It is not within a mapped floodway. It does have access to public services and it is served by a network of public roads. Approximately two acres of the ten acre property falls under the designated categories of prime farmland. Or the natural resources component. Of the conference plan. Any questions?
Is the applicant or their representative present wants to present? Doesn't have to.
Um, I could just.
Step left the microphone and state your name for the record. Your address or social security number or any that first of that.
Okay.
If you know anything else about trees, that's helpful too.
Um, my name's Jeff Wiley. You say address five nine four. Okay, Jeff Wiley, I live there. I purchased my property in nineteen ninety two. I've lived there full time since two thousand and seven. And I personally know. All the neighbors that wrote comments and consider them all good neighbors. Um. I visited each one of them and others before I applied for the zone change. At that moment, there was. No negative feedback. But everyone has their right to. You know, take their time and do things. We have uh, two legally permitted. Residential dwellings on our ten acres. Uh, those two along with three or four outbuildings. Are within one acre of land. And the other nine acres are forested, natural fauna and wildlife habitat. I've spent considerable time and effort, money sending and clearing dead trees and fire hazards. Our daughter Jackie and our two granddaughters reside in our nine hundred foot. Uh, nine hundred square foot ADU. Our granddaughters basically grew up on the property. A daughter would like to purchase her home from us. This would ensure her ownership and the family property. And help us in our retirement. Our existing home sites are. Located along the creek and are buffered from neighboring home sites. Our request is. A zone change from rural five to rural. Rural ten to rural five. And. I personally don't believe. Our requests will create the outcome voiced in some of the comment letters. I trust uh, the commission to make their determination. And I thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Riley, any questions for them? Okay, well, their public testimony next. The rules of public testimony are the following. Speak into the microphone at the rostrum or. Micro right here front. Loud and clear. So we can all understand you and some of the people at home can hear you through the microphone. Uh, state your name. Don't need your address, don't you, don't need your phone number. And the time limit is three minutes for testimony and any public testimony may receive an extra three minutes and no more. Any other person who has signed up. To share public testimony for a total of no more than six minutes. Comments be limited to the specifics of this file. If any public testimony agrees with or use the shared public testimony, sir, do respect. For everyone's time and simply stating you agree with that test. Personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position are not allowed. Chat clapping cheering or booing is not allowed. And remember. This hearing is being shared. Live via the internet and is also being reported. Public viewing. Forever. The chair opens the hearing to public testimony. We did read, I think it was about four public comments. Up for this hearing and. People have signed up first. Uh, Rochelle Hendricks present. Would you like to comment? Would you like to comment? Okay. Uh, Chris Jones. Good?
Good, good.
And Jackie Martin. All these people are good. Is there anyone that I can't see who would like to hear public testimony? Live here at this time or anybody online, their hand up. Or that's hand up. Steve, we got one? Okay, Chair plus your public testimony. Well, four bill rebuttal since we have no. More information. Provided during public testimony. The commissioners now deliberate this file. Let's commissioner deliberate. Got a question for Kyle. This just out of curiosity, I know it doesn't really matter. Do you know the length to width ratio of this? Parcel as it is today?
Would you not?
Does it happen to be out of? Compliance, look like.
Be honest with you, I do not know. I didn't crunch the numbers here real quick.
Not worried about it.
Didn't review it for that.
Looks like splitting it would just. Rectify it if it were out of compliance. Make sure you have anything you want to discuss before we go over our. Or worksheet.
No, just uh, this commission part, just noting um. Containing prime agricultural soils. Does contain. I think we need to talk a little. When we get into deliberation.
Well, let's do it. Worksheet is next, the staff report. Remembered as presented in the staff report is contains. As the pressure mentioned. Aids prime agricultural soils. See if I can make the. Have we able to determine that? Portion of the parcel that is prime farmland is draining. So somewhat four liter in this with the description and so. Bottom of factors.
That's yeah, that's about a volume. Means there's some four liter.
Hey, I'm reading twelve, title twelve, three two two. A. Excuse me, three, two, two. B. Two. Act force ten in areas designated as act force landing in the comprehensive plan that do not feature primary soils. Uh, excuse me, that's act force to mirror look in your world. There it is. Title twelve, three, two, three. B, one, C. R ten and designated in areas designated as rural residential. Comprehensive plan to meet one or more of the following criteria contain primary cultural soils. Let's go down to. Title twelve, three, two, three, B. Two. R five in areas designated rural residential comprehensive plan that are already developed at. Or near. The one dwelling unit for five acre density and. Or do not meet criteria for R ten above. That's interesting that three, two, three, B, one. R ten areas designated as rural residential in the comprehensive plan to meet one or more of the following criteria. But then three, two, three. Two. R five in areas designated rural residential. That are already developed at or near one dwelling for five acre density and or do not meet criteria for R ten above. And or.
So if it's developed. On unit for five acres. And just disregard all the rest.
Right.
Seems like.
It seems like.
Yeah. You know, taking a little bigger look at this area. This is one. Early small block of our town. Surrounded by act force ten and hard five. There's almost no other art except this one block. Very interesting. Rest of it. Last and south.
And the property you're running to the south that we established.
Yeah, then already developed. But few of the properties are are less.
Yeah, that that zoning is funny.
Yeah. If you zoom out a little bit.
The purposes of deliberation. I see twelve, three, two, three. B. As unnecessary self contradictory, but the B two. Is where we find before. So. It's my view that. This parcel in this area are. Already. Both the code already developed at or near the one dwelling unit for five acre density.
Is it directional? Yes. Is it mostly to the south? Yeah, but. Nearby within.
End of body, yeah.
He's almost every one of those problems.
So then therefore you don't need to get into the niche of. Soil drainage.
Soil, right. And what containing these hands means.
And I.
Poorly drained classified.
Yeah, exactly. Is it? Yes. Is it a call? Is it potentially prime next?
Yeah, that's not a very well written bit of code.
Also containing character that's by.
Yeah, character. Shovel full on your property. Right? Yeah, I'm withholding my sarcasm. At all the possibilities there. Alright. I'm done deliberating that. Let's go to our worksheet. Prior to the zoning. Prior to the rendering. Decision on a zone change, bearing by sure review the particular facts, circumstances. Of each proposed zone change in terms of the following standards, and should find adequate evidence showing that such use at the purpose location at the proposed location. And we have five standards that we're looking at. Oh, look, there's B C R C twelve, three, two, three, two. And check the box. Good job, Commissioner. Alright, Idaho code is that what I C stands for? Sixty seven dash six five one one. The governing board should analyze proposed changes to zoning ordinances to ensure they are nonconfident policies. The adopted comprehensive plan if the requested, if the request is found to be if the. Quest is found by the governing board to be in conflict with the adopted plan. Or result in demonstrable adverse. Impacts on the delivery of services by any political subdivision. Biding public services, including school districts within the planning, planning jurisdiction, bearing board may require. Request to be submitted to the planning or. Planning and zoning commission or in absence of commission, the governing board may consider an amendment to the comprehensive plan or certain. Notice in your procedures in Idaho vote. After the plan has been amended and I've already been in there. Okay. That was a lot boilerplate that was unhelpful.
Yeah, I mean.
That was just a flat.
Staff report made it fairly clear that. It's 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 a valid comparison to make. Between our ten and our five. And it's in rural residential. Well, to me, that makes a need this.
Now I agree with that.
Because below you get into the specifics of. Why one versus the other. Listen. In, you know, if you were trying to zone something, you know, a compound land use. It was incompatible. To me, that's. Well, I think staff reflects. And it needs this. Particular checkbox.
The comprehensive plan analysis and staff report very helpful. Starts on page six.
Yeah.
Kyle repeated. Quite a while. But after each section of that. Policy in the operating analysis, Saps analysis. Um, is. Good, I agree with it. They do point out in the Sarah report that um. They do point out in the staff report that um. The comprehensive plan analysis that the area that this, this. Particular. The subject parcel is within the area of impact and save fund rate. But city fund rate not very common on the proposal, so. We don't, we don't have to bring in new information from there to get rid of that. It's nice. So after. Listening to staff's presentation. Reviewing again. Comments, analysis. I, I, my conclusion is that this. Application is changed, proposed changes in order to be comprehensive plan.
Read, I agree, right, I agree.
Okay, B C R C twelve, two, one, five. And three, while you're looking at it says whether the application, the documentation provided by the applicant sufficiently meets the applicant. Contents and criteria. Oh, this is such a simple file. Everything's there.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't catch that. I thought anything that was asked for was not providing.
Yeah, there was no note of any of this application.
So I would suggest. Answered that. Yeah, I agree more. The list is very short. There's site plan, there's narrative. There's a legal description. There's a vicinity map. And any other information considered by the plan director of body necessary evaluation proposal. Yeah. Check in that box. The twelve, two, one, six, valuation of many proposals. Is there adequate evidence? That the proposal is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan? Yeah, we've already discussed this. Determined after uh, considering Idaho code. Standard for review, agreed that. We're this proposal isn't compliant. Nice Sash report was there as well, good coverage. In good detail. Okay, and the last two standards are chapter uh. Title twelve, chapter three. We reviewed already three, two, three, B, one and B, two. Splitting hairs on the difference between rural ten and rural five. Will to that. How the proposal is compatible with the rural five to start. Interview the public comments. For the record, I. I like public comments to be interesting. Um, but I didn't find anything, the new information, public comments that would. Help me determine if this. If this proposal is in. Alliance with. Code review. So I didn't find it there to. Uh, discuss that either while spying.
No.
No, I think we need to already be public comment. I think it's very important to do that. So. Competitors provide their. I have run out of topics for deliberation. That's probably the thing anybody else for the topic we're discussing right now. Or here to make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion. I'm going to recommend a frivolous project for county commissioners files, C C zero, 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 three dash two, five. Requesting a zone change from rural ten to rural five, finding that it is not in conflict with policies of Bonner County comprehensive plan. Modern County Rice code is enumerated in following block one. Proposal is not in conflict with the policies of Bonner County comprehensive plan. Question two, this proposal was reviewed lines of cloud twelve. Our county vice code and it was found being combined. Question three, the proposal is in accord. With the purpose of the rural five zoning district provided chapter three, title twelve, modern county vice code. This decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time staff had looked prepared with testimony received this hearing. I further move to adopt a reasoned statement as discussed in deliberation of the steering. And the analysis set forth in the staff report was managed during this hearing. And direct planning staff to draft the reasoned statement to reflect the motion to set forth metal code section six, seven dash six, five, three, four. Have the chair sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking part in the problem. The commissioner has moved to regular approval. Does any commission care to discuss or second the motion? I was second time. I have a motion to second or commissionable for my life.
Mr. Paulson, I.
Commissioner Blazer, I.
Commissioner Rose Camp, I.
Commissioner Marvel, I.
Commissioner Clark, I.
The. What are the words? Motion carries. By voting in favor and not voting against. That's the end of our only file. Does staff have any reminders, updates, show tunes, camp songs to share at this time? Microphone is open, it's open mic.
No sound names. I didn't prepare. You caught me off guard. So next hearing, um, we'll have the two that were uh, canceled from. This evening is uh, as well as an additional two, so it'll be probably a little bit longer, but. Hearing, um. But um, other than that, I think that's it.
That's on the twenty first of August.
Twenty first of August, yeah, we do. We'll send out like we usually do, we'll send out and uh, and confirm. A quorum. Yeah, um, but I have nothing else for you guys today.
Thank you. The uh, let's see. First uh, office, so uh. Time. Six thirteen. Finished a file in record time. We are adjourned until August twenty first, two thousand. One down.